And I served with Maxine Waters on several of her panels out there in LA. She lit them up at this event. I'm telling you, they hadn't called me in months. By the time I got back to DC on Monday, I had all of them on the telephone.
That's power.
Yes, indeed, and it's really, it's needed. And I can tell you that we have been able to work some situations out. We had one woman who had a 13% mortgage, and we got her down to 1%. This is 1% for five years, 1% for five years, and then a 5% interest for the rest of the loan. Now, the reality is, these lenders can do it. They have reduced their staff. There's hardly anybody working there. The people that they have on the phones hardly don't know what they're doing. I mean, you've got to have someone working on your behalf to get this stuff done with these lenders. That's number one. And two, you know, in terms of the future, I just would say to our community, you know, in times of peril, this is time when we need to, when we can wake up. This is an opportunity for us to see things differently. Guys, we've got to focus on our credit. We've got to go and ask for advice and know that there are organizations like Home Free USA and the Urban League. And we are here to assist and solve, and at least help to solve, some of the concerns that you have. So, please know that we are here. Please know that we need to be informed, we need support. It's okay to ask questions. And it's very interesting, 98% of most people, 98% of all people, based on our findings and HUD, who has subprime loans never had any kind of pre-purchase education. And I think the Congresswoman earlier talked about education. I mean, we just need to know, and we would be amazed at the number of people who come to us who don't, they don't even know that they have an armed loan. So, it's about education, it's about information and preparation.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's give her a hand. We've got six more people, and then that'll be the conclusion of our audience question period. Let's go, and I want to ask everyone, quick question, let's get a quick answer. Next person.
Edward Felder, Tampa, Florida.
Your question?
As a former banker and commercial lender, I understand how commercial lenders and banks make lending decisions. As we give $700 billion to the financial institutions who ruin their own firms, how is it that we are going to guarantee that they're going to go ahead and relend that money out? With credit scores, they're looking at historical cash flow, I don't think that they're really going to give that money out. So, I think it's really going to be strengthening their balance sheet and not really affecting the average American. So, in any legislation, I think that really needs to be addressed. How do we go and ensure, if we are bailing them out, that they're going to help some of the folk?
Thank you for your question. Anybody want to take a shock at responding to that? Yeah, Ms. Solis?
I'll just say two things, and that is, I think you're right. I think there's an obligation. Congress, particularly members of the Congressional Black Caucus, are working hard to ensure that if we are going to provide these kind of resources to shore up these financial institutions, that there be relief for homeowners who are about to lose their homes, and for communities that are swimming under this tsunami of properties. And I think they need to hear from you that that is a priority, if in fact this plan is going forward.
Great, thank you. Next question?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Kim Jackson, Executive Director of Landale Christian Development Corporation in the City of Chicago. I represent nonprofits, and a lot of what has been stated today is to go to the nonprofits. However, I will tell you that the nonprofits are suffering to stay afloat and keep their doors open in this economy. I'd love to hear more about supporting, the banks supporting these nonprofits and their efforts at the ground level to help families stay in their homes. We are in a crisis. We are in an economic crisis, we're in a housing crisis. A lot of our families in my community, 80% of those families, are not homeowners, they are renters. These investors have bought these buildings and now have, are in foreclosure as well. So, we're suffering not only from those who own their own homes, but those that are renting who will become displaced because they will not have a place to live because these investors are now being foreclosed upon. So, we have a complex issue here. And I think that, again, nonprofits are there at the ground level to support, but we also need to keep in mind and hold these banks accountable to support these nonprofits and their efforts.
Thank you. Any quick comments? Yes, Ms. Widener?
Very important point that you made. I think the fundamental solution to this whole situation is going to have to start at every local community where the local government is in collaboration with its nonprofits, and partly in response to the HUD question, where the local government and the community together are saying what they need to come out of this. What they need in the way of new resources from HUD, what they need in the way of resources for counselors. Because you're right, a lot of the solutions are falling on the backs of nonprofits, and I don't see where the money is coming from being targeted to the nonprofits. I just met with the mayor of Cincinnati, and to his credit, as we were talking through how to organize Cincinnati to get ahead of the foreclosure tsunami, it's still manageable there. We made it very clear that that entire network of nonprofits in the City of Cincinnati had to be supported. He was absolutely understanding of that, and the work has started in that direction. So, you're right, but...
Thank you very much. And I'd add this comment about the nonprofit sector. The essence of what we do in the nonprofit sector is provide services to people for free. And therefore, we have to raise money from foundations, banks, and the government to be able to provide those services. So, advocacy on behalf of more support by your city governments, by state governments, by financial services corporations, by local foundations, to shift and reprioritize their giving to organizations that do counseling and financial education and support people is what we have to do. We are in a crisis.
That's right.
The nation has to shift to address this crisis. And I think that in the nonprofit space, we find is that we are stretched with more people who need us than we have the ability...
To serve.
To respond.
That's right.
And so, we appreciate what you said about nonprofits. We'll go to the next question. Thank you very much.
Mark, if I could add to that?
Yeah, Mayor?
One thing that I would also ask that you all stress, and this young lady, she hit it very well, that is, make sure that you are in a city where you have a mayor who understands the value, the importance, the need to have highly trained, highly skilled, well-staffed, and well-funded offices of community development and neighborhood development. Because there are unfortunately lots of cities where that is not a priority. And just as Mark mentioned, that you have here at the federal level, you don't see HUD at the table when they should be. You have lots of cities that don't have mayors like the three of us here, who have those folks in those positions at those levels around the table, with the bankers, with the financial community in your local cities, and connecting to our nonprofit community so they can be effectively connected, effectively empowered, and doing the jobs that they have the ability to do.
Excellent. Point very well taken. And let's go to the next question very quickly because we want to get everyone in. Question?
I am Dr. Gerald Norde. My wife and I are from the Maryland eastern shore. A political statement, we are black American and not African American. Ms. Tisdale, question is to you. Is it absolutely necessary that the government bail us out and not the market?
The markets are a great pulse on the emotions of the economy at the time, and the markets, markets do need...
Speak up a little bit more here.
Is that better?
Yeah.
The markets, right now, are experiencing a complete meltdown, a complete loss of confidence, and they're looking somewhere for help. I think as we've seen over the past few weeks, each time we've gotten a suggestion or solution coming out of the government, we see the market plummeting 200 to 300 points. The market's not necessarily convinced that the US government is the place to look to for help. I think we're being very heartened by the fact that we're seeing a bipartisan effort on this bailout plan, but I think some solutions, like we heard Mr. Rain suggest earlier about alternatives to just another bailout, are going to be necessary to really restore faith from the markets. And what's something that I'm so glad to hear everybody talking on, talking about today, things like financial education, looking at some of the root causes, things like discrimination and predatory lending. Wall Street knows that these are some of the underlying causes, so you're not going to see the markets have a favorable response until you see something serious come out of Washington that will keep us from getting in this situation again.
And let me offer another thought about underlying causes that hasn't been discussed. You know, while there's a credit and housing crisis, there's a jobs crisis.
Mm-hmm.
A big jobs crisis. The highest unemployment rate we've experienced in years, the most number of people who in fact are unemployed, and wage rates that have not kept up with inflation. So, you can fix the credit market, but if you cannot help people increase what they earn for their productive work over time, if it doesn't keep pace with inflation, then people will continue to get deeper in the hole. The reason why I say that is because what we need from the next President of the United States is a plan for the reconstruction of this country, for the rebuilding of this country, an economic long-term plan. What we're faced with is stopgap, a Housing and Economic Recovery Act, now quote-unquote a bailout. This is a crisis-defining time in our lives and in American history, and we cannot forget that underlying all of this is a serious jobs crisis. The income gap in this country between the top fifth and the bottom fifth has increased over the last 30 years. Those in the top 20% have seen their incomes rise faster than the rate of inflation. Those in the bottom two to three fifths have seen their incomes not keep pace with the rate of inflation. These are some serious, long-term issues, and I say that because it is complex, it is wide-ranging. But simply fixing the balance sheets of financial services companies is not necessarily going to bring back economic prosperity or a lessening of the difficulties that people face. So, that needs to certainly be recognized in connection with this. So, thank you for your question and the answer. Let me go to Mayor Bell, and then we'll go to the next question.
Mark, I just want to elaborate again on your point, and this whole issue about fixing the credit, if people don't have jobs...
That's right.
That's not going to be the thing. And I think this country needs to get behind a Marshall Plan in terms of rebuilding our cities with infrastructure, roads, bridges. It puts people to work, it puts money in everybody's pocket, and we can afford to do that. So, I don't think we need to get away from that. That's very important.
Let me recognize Member of the CBC, the Honorable Donald Payne, represents the state of New Jersey, the City of Newark, and the surrounding areas. Congressman Payne. The next question?
Thank you to all the panelists. My name is Felicia Brown, and I am a real estate broker from California. And a bill was recently passed that prevents seller contribution on FHA loans, leaving programs like the Nehemiah Program, Heart, and Grant America Programs null and void, where banks can get a credit back through a non-for-profit for giving a qualified borrower the down payment funds. It just seems to me that that doesn't make sense in the sense that that was a win-win situation for everyone. The homes sitting on the market get moved, banks are lending again, crime goes down because homes aren't sitting empty, aesthetics improved, property taxes paid. Can anyone shed some light as to why that provision was in that bill, and what can we do to get that changed?
Any comments, Ms. Solis? No comments?
Just one comment, which is, I think we need lots of tools in the toolbox. I can't speak to the rationale for why that was removed. I know that folks like Congressman Waters are looking at solutions to provide new tools that help with seller financing. And one issue that wasn't addressed here, Mark, I think is important, that we need to look at, which is, this situation also means we need to look at new, effective tools to ensure that the credit that's been extended continues, and we develop products that make sense so that we don't see a decline in homeownership, particularly for low-income and minority families.
I do know that Congresswoman Waters, and I believe Congressman Frank and others have introduced a bill to revive the Down Payment Assistance Program with some new controls. You may want to check on that...
Yes.
...to find out more about that. So, thank you for your question. Let's go to the next question. We've got two more folks.
Good afternoon. My name is Susan Weber. I'm a professor of education, and I'm from New York City. Question is, since so many Afro-Americans have lost their homes to foreclosure, I'm wondering subsequently, would they have also lost their right to vote?
Let us, I want to address that. The fact that you are subject to foreclosure does not in and of itself mean you lose your right to vote. But I want to add, this is very, very important point, because there's a lot of misinformation going around about this. There are, in some states, laws which require you to change your address if you relocate within a certain period of time, meaning if you moved out of a home in April, then you have some obligation within so many days to go and change your registration to the new location where you're voting. We are saying to people that they not only, we not only have to register to vote, we have to verify our vote. So, that means that each and every one of us should call the elections board, call the registration board, verify that your voter registration is intact. Number two, we have got to ensure, and some people believe that you can show up in the polls on Election Day having never registered before and be entitled to vote. Yes, you can do it if you live in Minnesota. Yes, you can do it if you live in a handful of states where, interestingly, the black population is small. But generally speaking, you have to register to vote in most states before October the 6th. It's around that deadline in order to be able to vote. We want to encourage people to verify. The other thing that is new, this time with respect to voting, is that more states than ever before are allowing early voting. In some states, you can go and vote today. So, we need to understand that one way to avoid long lines, one way to avoid bad weather, one way to avoid confusion at the polling places is to encourage people in those states where early voting is available to go and vote now. Let's not wait until 6 o'clock on Election Day...
That's right.
...to go get in line. So, I really want to encourage, we in the civil rights community are going to be doing some things to the extent that we can over the next month, not only to continue to encourage registration, but to inform people about early voting and getting out to vote. Our commitment as a community in the backdrop of this crisis with this historic election should be to have the highest voter turnout in our history. We have to set that as an overall goal. We have to recognize that differences in turnout between our community and the majority community have left a lot of votes on the table. We have to recognize that there will be an effort by some to utilize trickery, deceit, misinformation, internet disinformation, to try to discourage, to try to suggest, to try to suppress our right to vote. We have to stand up strong. And every one of you in here is a community leader, an influencer, in your church, in the workplace, in community organizations, back in your local community. I want to ask you to get the conversation going about registering before the deadline. Number two, every time those of you that have a mic, can make a presentation, do a radio interview of any sort, to say to people, please register before October the 6th. Please know that if in your community you can in fact early vote, that we help our senior citizens, we help our young people, we help those who work to get to the polling places early, don't wait till Election Day in order to try to push this turnout. We need to be aware of the tools that are available, and there is a hotline, the number escapes me, available, the National Coalition for Black Civic Participation. We have a link, there's a hotline where you can call and report irregularities, suppression tactics, and the like. This is a very important question because there is misinformation out there about the right to vote. Simply because you are quote "foreclosed" on does not mean you lose your right to vote. But all of us need to verify, verify our obligation to go and change our address, change our address in each and every state, if in fact we've moved voluntarily, or in the case of foreclosure, involuntarily, so that we do not face a challenge at the polling place on Election Day. One of the tactics you can expect is people standing in polling places challenging voters, which is allowable in a number of states. And we need to be prepared, we need to be insistent. So, I thank you for the question, and I offer all of that for all of us.
Hi, thank you. Have we actually put a picture on what predatory lending is? I don't think every subprime loan is evil in and of itself, but there are discreet practices that lead to predatory loans. So, have we actually put a picture on what it is so that we all know it when we see it at the table, and is there a law against it?
The general definition that was shared with me last night was that a subprime loan is a loan where the interest rate is 3% higher than the Treasury rate, 3% higher. Now, many of these loans also include other features. Number one, a number of them include no income verification. A number of them include no escrowing of taxes or insurance, which means you've got to pay the tax bill yourself, you've got to pay the insurance bill yourself. A number of them include what I call the wave, wavy interest rates. They look like they're down, then they're going up. Or Jack-in-the-Box interest rates, where you get a interest rate at the beginning, a teaser rate, 1%, 2%, boy, that looks good. But what they don't say is in the third year, it could go up to 10%, 9%, 8%, much, much higher. But the general definition, as I understand it, is an interest rate that is 3% higher. Think about that. If the interest rate was 6, 6.5, you're paying 9. You're paying 3% higher than a conventional loan generally is paying. And what that costs out of pocket, not only in the short run, meaning on a monthly basis, but how much more money you're going to pay over the life of the loan. You're paying more to borrow that money than someone else comparably situated. Now, I'll make this, in the industry, they'll say, well, there's a case to be made that in some cases where there's greater risk, that we should be able to charge higher. The fact of the matter is, is right now, except in a handful of states, there are no controls. It is basically a free-market situation, whatever goes, whatever they were available to do, which is why oversight, which is why regulation, which is why anti-predatory lending is important. Ms. Tisdale?
Let me take one point that's, an interesting point that you were touching on is what is predatory lending? There's a very commonly used term in the financial services industry called the "black tax." It's talked about in meetings, I mean, this is just what people call it. Subprime mortgage rates tend to be higher because the lender is saying that you're a bigger credit risk, so I get to charge you more. Now, these subprime loans are directed towards minorities and a large proportion of women because of social stereotypes that they're not financially savvy, and they become self-fulfilling prophecies. A minority earning $100,000 a year with a good credit rating pays a higher mortgage rate than a white earning $35,000 a year with a less credit rating. How can that happen when you look at some of the laws that are supposed to be in effect to protect from that kind of discrimination? And that's one of the reasons I'm here talking to members of Congress now. One, existing regulation has not worked, so some of those laws need to be rewritten. Two, of course, there's things on the books quote-unquote to make predatory lending practices not work, but those are not working. So, that's where we have to put our efforts now. But you're absolutely right, predatory lending, there's really nothing out there that's preventing it because it's the most prevalent thing going in the subprime crisis.
Mark, I want to piggyback on that.
Mayor Bell?
On that, we have something in this land called fair lending laws. Fair lending laws. Now, either we've got a poor definition of what fair lending is, or we need to rewrite the laws. So, when you have the type of loans that have been propagated on people such as been described here, they can't be fair. They can't be fair. So, we need to rewrite the rules for fair lending laws, or we need to enforce those that are on the book. And I think our federal regulators haven't done that. I think one of the important things the Congressional Black Caucus needs to do is to step up and make sure that our regulators are being fair and are monitoring and enforcing the fair lending laws.
Great point. We'll go to one more question, our final question, and then we'll have one-minute closings from all of our panelists.
I think one person?
Is that it? Let's give all the questioners a big round of applause. And let's thank our panel one more time. We're going to begin with Ms. Widener, one minute.
Let me say that I believe this crisis can be met if we have determination at the community level, with leadership from our mayors, and with support of a president who understands community organizing and who understands what it takes to turn an administration around in all the areas necessary to meet this crisis.
Thank you. Mr. Bowman?
Yes, thank you again, Mark. And I'd just like to end with an offer, to continue to work with each of you, with the nonprofit community, with financial institutions, to continue to work on solutions to this challenge. And to let you know that, I should have mentioned earlier, we have a limited amount of resource guides that we will make available at the door...
Great.
...that have a whole host of links and information for those who are interested in identifying other resources that might be available to you as a nonprofit, or to you as a homeowner who might be at risk of foreclosure.
Good. Thank you very much, Ms. Solis.
Most of you in the room are really pioneering the kinds of solutions that we need to really take to scale across this country. I encourage you to get involved, not just in the election, but also in reaching out to your members of Congress and other elected officials to talk about the impacts that this is having on your lives and those lives of your community. So, thank you for having us.
Thank you, Ms. Solis. Ms. Tisdale?
This is what I was talking about, the "black tax" is really a great synopsis of the complexities of this problem. What does that tell us? We as individuals need to be empowered with information that that exists before we sit down with lenders. From a lawmaking and from a regulatory level, those types of things don't need to be able to happen. But from a community level and from basically a Department of Education level, we need to be empowering our next generation with information so that the financial services industry knows that they can't be taken advantage of. Departments of Education should be teaching basic money management in schools. We're going to live to be 100 years old. Who's going to pay for those longer lives?
Thank you very much. Mayor Bell?
Again, fair lending is important. I think that we have something called the Community Reinvestment Act, which would encourage good lenders to meet the credit needs of legitimate borrowers regardless of their race. And I think the impact of foreclosures and high-cost lending for these households is very grave and very damaging. We've seen that. And unless we have the enforcement of the civil rights and fair lending, that's going to be, that's been lost, and I think we've got to make sure that our regulators are doing that. And again, I'm going to appeal to Congressional Black Caucus, you can lead the way, making sure these things happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mayor Hall?
Yes, I'm hoping that the HUD and the federal government would turn over some of those foreclosed homes to the community development, and so we can recycle that back into the residents and make those homes affordable for them. But the one thing that we do need is leadership that understands our community, and that leadership, to me, is Obama. I do have that.
Ms. Griffin?
Thank you. Just in closing, I want to say how honored we are to have all of you, and many of you have been sitting for a while, so we hope you've gotten some really great information. We want this to be the beginning of a longstanding meeting of the minds, because that's what's going to be needed in our community, for us to come together and know, as Mary Lee Widener said, that we can overcome, we need to understand where we are and how we're going to be able to work together to get there. I also want to invite everyone here, our next panel, which I think starts at 12:30, this is a panel that I will moderate, it's called 10 Simple Secrets to Financial Success. So, we want to invite each one of you there. We'll have a credit expert, a mortgage expert, and a former NBA player who has become just an outstanding housing developer, so we'd like to invite you.
Great. Thank you. Mayor Glover?
Thank you, Mayor Morell. I just want to finish by responding to the brother who asked a question about, why don't we just let the market fix this situation? You know, the failure of government to effectively regulate...
You know, the failure of government to effectively regulate and police the marketplace is exactly why we're here. And so the expectation that we would just simply allow the market to correct itself is not a reasonable or practical solution. And so, don't let anybody fool you into trying to believe that government does not need to step up and not only address this situation in the short term, but also be proactive in dealing with it on the long term, because there have been changes unfortunately in things like the Community Investment Act. Former Senator Phil Graham gutted that. It means very little right now. And so we need to understand that those who would come up and offer platitudes in terms of solutions need to be challenged on those things, because if we don't come in with substance and we won't come up with solutions, the last thing I want to say to you is focus also on your local cities. Make sure, as I said, if you don't have a mayor who is as progressive as Mark Morell was when he was mayor of New Orleans, or these two gentlemen, or myself, or others, or Mayor Mallory of Cincinnati, you need to step forward, challenge those mayors, challenge those council members, to make sure that they're doing what they need to do to be engaged and proactive at the local level so we can help move this situation forward.
Thank you very, very much. Let's give all of our panelists a warm, warm round of applause. Before you leave, ladies and gentlemen, let us also thank the two sponsors for this morning, The Home Depot and the Federal Home Loan Bank of San Francisco. Let's give them a hand. We want to thank them for making today possible. This discussion does continue this afternoon with two panels. The first, beginning at 12:30, "Ten Simple Secrets to Financial Success." And you'll get an opportunity to hear more from Marcia Griffin of Home Free USA, who will be featured on that panel. And then at the very same time, a panel on Saving Solutions or Sell, which will feature a number of people talking about restructuring of mortgages, refinancing of mortgages, and loan modification. So please make a note that those panels will begin in Rooms 146A and B, beginning at 12:30. Let me also, with respect to voting, add one other comment. This was shared with me by someone from the audience, and that is, in a number of states, ex-offenders can vote. In a number of states, ex-offenders can vote. The rules vary from state to state. Financial education and education about our political and voting rights are important. Please check, please examine, please know what the rules are in your state so that we can help as many people as possible to get registered before the deadline. And thanks to the person who shared this with me. Someone also shared with me that there is litigation being planned to challenge the foreclosure, non-voting issue. I'll just make a note about that. I know that these discussions are going to continue in the hallways. Let me finally take this opportunity to thank these panelists, as well as those who were with us earlier. And let me also thank the Congressional Black Caucus. The Congressional Black Caucus. Forty-four members strong. I believe nine of the caucus members serve on the House Financial Services Committee. An important number, an important voice on that committee to shape the solutions to this problem. And we want to thank them one more time. Maxine Waters was with us, Sheila Jackson Lee was with us, Don Payne, Gwen Moore, Al Green, members of Congress who were with us. We want to thank all of them for their strong advocacy and support. The Congressional Black Caucus now, many members are in very important positions, chairing committees, chairing subcommittees. Congressman Clyburn in the leadership, an opportunity to shape ideas. We need to recognize that one of our responsibilities is to put forth those ideas, to bring those ideas, to be vocal and to be advocates. Finally, on behalf of the National Urban League, we want all of you to know, for those of you that have worked with us and supported us, how much we appreciate your support. We are expanding significantly our work in financial education and housing counseling. Part of our '09 work will have a very heavy focus on an initiative that we call Restore Our Homes, where we're going to work to open homeownership centers in a number of cities around the nation. We have to take this call to financial education, this call to assisting people in saving their homes, this call to advocacy around our economic rights very, very seriously. What's on the table is a chance for our community to lose more wealth and more assets than at any time in the history of the republic. We have to take that cause, to do something about that very, very seriously. So I want to thank you all for all of your support. There are many, many notes that people are sharing with me about voting and voting rights, non-electioneering. What I want to say about that is I want to encourage you, at our website, there's a link to the website, the National Coalition for Black Civic Participation. Those of us that have access need to read it, understand it, and then share it about what you can and cannot do in or outside of a polling place with respect to voting. We need to be well-prepared. Remember 2000, remember 2000, when votes were discounted. Remember 2004, when votes were discounted. We need to stand up and say, never again. We will not allow it to happen in 2008. And that ought to be our collective call. So ladies and gentlemen, thank you all for coming. Thanks to the CBC, the sponsors, the panelists, and thanks to you, the audience. You've been a great audience. Thanks for being with us today.
All right, Mark. Super job, man. I don't know how you hang up here.
Once again, ladies and gentlemen, thank you all for joining us this morning. Please remember to visit our wonderful exhibit hall located in Exhibit Hall A from 12 to 7 p.m.